But we, I mean, essentially, we either... It either needs to be... We were discussing it roughly in terms of three dollars for ten gallons. So if we're down for thirty gallon bags, then it would need to be nine dollars. I would hate to see this three dollars jump up to nine dollars since we've already advertised the three dollars. Just since we haven't advertised the bag size, that is the context we were discussing it in the first place. And the only thing that makes sense is to offer the bags roughly this size for three dollars apiece. To complicate things a little bit more, if you all remember the discussion we had after the Greenfield meeting, we were talking about charging enough to cover the full cost of collection and lower in taxes accordingly. And so we calculated, I think off the top of my head, it was, I think, nine dollars for the small can, eighteen for the medium can, and twenty seven for the large can. Where each socks, these thirty gallons equals nine dollars, basically. And then with all the random out about the tax deduction and the tax credit, et cetera, we ended up taking the hundred and fifty dollar annual tax credit just out of the fees themselves. And so when we subtracted that from those numbers, we ended up with something like negative four dollars for the small can, four dollars for the medium can, and twelve dollars for the large can. So we just bottomed that negative four off to zero, kept the four and twelve. But that zero, four and twelve reflects a hundred and fifty dollar tax credit, but it's still essentially based on nine dollars per thirty gallons. And so make offering the bags at three dollars apiece for ten gallon bags, that amounts to nine dollars for thirty gallons. As in, so we're offering, we're talking about offering the bags at the same essential rate that the carts are based on, if you do three dollars for ten gallons. Does that make... Does that make sense?
If you don't, if you don't charge more for the bags than you did, you're sharing several cart, you're just...
Or at least the same.
Working in different...
Right. Yeah, they don't, at least cost probably the same. And everybody's got to get that. Like the, the lower, the zero, four and twelve, those are kind of artificially over rates that reflect a hundred and fifty dollar credit or tax credit. Every household gets that credit. Every household is paying nine dollars for thirty gallons with a hundred and fifty dollar credit kind of factored into things. But I think it makes sense for additional thirty gallon increments or even ten gallon increments for about that three dollars. So is that, is that another parameter we can move on from then? That we're talking about offering twelve three overflow bags per year? Or we're talking about offering kitchen sized overflow bags for three dollars apiece where you can fit two or three into a small can? And then we pick up oversized items on various accounts and stuff for free? Is that another one we can set and move on from without objection? Here's a question that has come up, that's a good question. We already have a bunch of cans out in the Crestwood neighborhood as part of that pilot project. I guess, I don't think we discussed this. I guess I've just always assumed that those carts can be incorporated into this program.
Well, I think we have to take them all back and redistribute the carts because they have a chip in it. And today we offer the sixty-five and ninety-five gallon carts.
Sure.
In Crestwood, it's probably the easiest is to collect all those cans and redistribute based on the order we get.
What, but can those, can those Crestwood cans, I mean surely they can be distributed?
Probably need those cans to redistribute if they want a smaller or larger can, we'll probably use those cans.
Okay.
So they won't be wasted, they'll be utilized and just be in the...
As long as, as long as they're used in one place or another. And, and my sense is that especially since those, since the Crestwood cans are all sixty-five or ninety-five gallon cans, if folks are underestimating right now, and I think a lot of folks are, and need an upgrade, then we'll have on hand an existing supply of sixty-five and ninety-five gallon cans. So that'll make it easier, not only will that make it easier for us to swap out for an upgrade because we'll have the larger size available anyway, but since we already have it on hand, that'd also make it easier for us to justify not charging that twenty dollars for the upgrade. I mean, I'd be happy to either make that five dollars or way entirely for you. But either way, we're also going to handle that. I just want to be satisfied with those cans could be used and incorporated into the system. So it sounds like we're okay there.
I think we have about two hundred cans out in Crestwood, so...
This kind of gets into the, the bags...
Are we going to waive the twenty dollars?
What's the, what's the will of the commission on that twenty dollar upgrade? Just waive it entirely? Do we want to waive it?
Well, I don't know if we've ever explained what's involved with the readdressing of cans. Have we ever explained that or talked about that?
It's just digital, right?
It's a computer chip in the handle.
Sure.
And I suspect a lot of people paint their address on the can, so it has to be clean. And then if everybody, if the majority of people have ordered the small can, and we don't have enough big cans, we may have to come back and order another X number of large cans to switch out. And then we'll have a bunch of eighteen gallon cans that, or thirty-six, five gallon cans that there is no use for. So I guess many, the people who made the decision based on the information they had and to waive the fee, we might, we might have to order a lot more cans than we anticipate today in the downside, and so...
I think there's, I think there's two, I think there's a couple of responses to that. I mean, one is that we'll have, we'll have a fair amount of larger cans sitting available in surplus already anyway by virtue of the Crestwood project. And that, that might not be enough to respond to everybody who wants to upgrade. But that still gives us a pretty fair buffer for folks who are looking for larger cans. We'll have, we'll have a fair amount of this on the annual rate angle. And also, I mean, over, over time, eventually, we're going to have to start replacing carts at what we expect to be an annual replacement rate of about five hundred percent a year. And so, and so over time, any surplus carts that we end up within the first year or two will be, none of it will go to waste. It'll all be reincorporated into the system over time. Because those surplus carts can obviously be used as replacement cars down the road instead of us paying for them down the road. So it might, I mean, I understand that if, if folks, if folks go overboard right now in terms of, in terms of upgrading and they have to order new carts, that doesn't cost us any more money in the long run at all. It just has us spending the money a little sooner rather than later. But it'll all, it'll all be used in time.
Could I give a suggestion on this specific item? Given the magnitude of work it's going to be to get these carts out into the public in February, maybe we can relook at this. Once we get the cans out there and see the magnitude of people who want to switch out and make this decision so that we at least, whatever they're, whatever they respond to in their order form, kind of be our first goal, is trying to get the cans out of what they respond to us. And if we find that, you know, we have requests pouring in right and left, that we can address that in a second, well, we'll switch it out at a later date. This way we can concentrate on getting these cans out today without trying to, "Well, I want to reorder, I want to reorder." We're already getting people, after seeing the cans, Kroger's saying, "Can you switch it out?" And I've already turned my sheet in, so... Just to keep us focused on getting the cans out is going to be difficult. But if people call in now and they hear, "Well, you can switch for free," that just throws another factor in trying to get these cans out. Because getting them so many choices, that it's very difficult to get all these orders right. And then put another, you know, if you can switch out for free, it's going to be another difficult.
To be clear, the biggest, the biggest sense of the city in terms of the switch out is the fact that we'll have to take, we'll actually have to acquire another can. As in, they, we've already provided somebody with a can, and they want to switch out, so we have to acquire a new can and provide that to them. And there's a relative, you know, labor investment in that as well, in terms of swapping the cans around. And I get that, that's one thing. In terms of right now, in terms of us still taking orders, and in terms of new cans actually being ordered yet, I mean, what's our response to folks right now? If you call in and say, "Well, I just sent in my form..."
We're putting them on a side list, and we're going to edit their...
Okay, so folks can go ahead and upgrade now without, without the twenty dollars extra.
Sure, I'm going to put them on another list. Unless they see the can out at Kroger's or downtown or City Hall. She's put them on this list, and she's going to go edit and change their, their order.
Okay, that's great.
We can do that, I'm just afraid, January, February, if we get the cans in and distribute it, and we just get tons of calls wanting to switch out.
Right.
It's going to take some time for people to get used to the, the system.
Sure.
And it'd be nice to give them some time to get used to it. And then if we want to consider changing for a, kind of get an idea of what, if everybody's okay, or if it's here and there, if it's a lot.
Please let me know if I'm not characterizing what you're saying correctly, but I think...
I would rather see the twenty dollars in place, given that's what we sent out in the... And because when people make decisions, they're accountable for their decisions, and they want, you know, for us in order to get the cans out to them correctly according to their order, that would be my preference, so we can concentrate in getting these cans out. And the default can is the sixty-five gallon can. And if they get that and it's too large and they don't want to pay the four dollars, they can always switch to the lower size can, and there's no cost. So I think they have a lot of flexibility today, but if we could address that twenty dollar in the next round, that's, we just don't know today how many people...
With the volumes.
With the volumes. We've given them a lot of choices, more than, more than most communities would have. They have a lot of choices today. And so it's going to take, with change or anything else, it's going to take some period of time to kind of get them into a flow. And they'll have overflow bags, you know, they'll, they'll have some time to use the overflow bags if they need to, or the, whatever number of free weeks, you know, they'll have some opportunities. But it's just, the cost of changing out the carts...
I hear all of that, and I see the value in not, not letting that option be free, because that would encourage less people to use it, but at the same time, at the same time, my preference would still be that we either keep the twenty dollar fee on the books, but issue a waiver for the first year, or we just simply refuse it, keep something more on the month of five dollars. Where folks still have to take responsibility if they're going to upgrade or where it's not separated. How do you, how do you feel about any of this? Mayor?
Mayor?
May I ask your official question? If there is an interesting point, this is the discussion point, I'm not saying this is right or wrong. If we charge the twenty dollar fee on the front end because the survey or the form says twenty dollars to go from a small can to a large, sorry, from the sixty gallon to the medium size to the small container? Less free, yeah, I'm ready to free, I'm sorry, I'm ready, um, for the twenty dollars. And this is going to be two parts, because we just said that, I think about the five dollar upgrade. If we charge people a front end, twenty dollars to do that, and then next year we can, we go back and say, "Well, anybody who changed it now doesn't have to pay." We've already charged those folks on, in the first year, twenty dollars. And they only think it's unfair that they had to pay it and others later on didn't. That's one thing. If we do what you said, and just do five dollars, that's certainly more reasonable than twenty. But it's still the concept of people saying, "Well, just on principle, I paid to make the change." And people actually didn't pay to make the change. Just a, right, but some of that, some people, it probably won't matter, other people didn't make it. Just nice.
Commissioner, throughout this discussion, I think a lot of good points made on both sides here. And it leads, throughout this discussion about this particular issue, leads me to the thought of, as you mentioned, people are accountable for what decisions they made in terms of what size can they want and things like that. And I think that really is a good point. You know, I think that, in the long that line of thought, that a certain person may have chose the larger container because they didn't want to pay that twenty dollar fee versus, or pay a bigger fee to go up versus go down when they were making an initial selection. So I guess considering all of the evidence and conversation and my thought process from going, it's kind of been a hill and dale through this meeting on this particular subject. But I think the point is well taken, and it might be a better idea to see the volume changes as we go forward on this and, and, you know, address it at that point, but keep it as we can put it in a sort of questionnaire.
I'm happy to agree with you on that, George. So it sounds like we're talking about, it sounds like we're talking about keeping that parameter the same way it's already been? Keep it, just not even changing that parameter for now?
Yeah, that way, just keep it simple and simple.
I have, I have talked to, I have talked to one person who expects they can get by with the smaller can once they and their family get into recycling. But who, who thinks it might take them a little while to get there, who, who rather than ordering the smaller can, having to pay to upgrade in case they are producing what they expect, is going to go ahead and order the medium can and then work on getting, getting that waste down and then swapping out for free when they can.
Right, and the logic, I mean...
Right, I think, I think that's a core of what you're saying.
And I think the logic is that, you know, by, by downgrading and giving that credit for that purchase of the can, part of that's because if you started out with a sixty-five gallon container or a ninety-five gallon container, and you're now down to a thirty-five gallon container, say you started with ninety-five, just to, to say, start up the ninety-five gallon container, and then within a year you're down to a thirty-five gallon container, you and your families really worked hard to try to find a way to recycle and change some of that waste in terms of, of waste. And not having to pay that, that fee to downgrade is a reward, an incentive to do that because, as you all know, we save money when residents do that. Residents who do the exact opposite get to moving up. And that's initially why the logic was put in place, to have, you know, a twenty dollar fee for moving up. But I think looking at it from this angle, it's more than just a problem, it's a problem before.
In terms of just continuing to clarify parameters, and some of this we loosely talked about, I think if, if we could put some numbers on it. We've talked about, I think we've all agreed on the need to make accommodations for elderly, disabled folks who have a hard time, for one reason or another, moving carts around. Obviously, these small thirty-five gallon carts and handles and wheels, they're obviously easier to move than your average thirty-one gallon cart without handles and wheels. But some folks still aren't going to be able to manage even that. And some folks being able to just take, you know, one, take, take their trash out one small pack at a time. I think one thing we can operate as an alternative, and this requires me to be fair across the board, is to, it misses the hybrid of, of tag your bag and offering cans, but it's to offer people cans, the option to take two liter cans instead of bags. So for example, let's say, let's say we can fit three bags inside each can increment, right? Let's say we can fit three overflow bags inside a small can, six inside a medium, and nine inside a large. Offer, instead of offering folks carts, offer folks who feel the need to handle bags instead of cans, the ability to throw away the same amount of garbage as the carts, but with, but basically, to offer free, free bags for zero dollars a month, to offer six bags for four dollars a month, and to offer nine bags for twelve dollars a month. That way people are still paying and saying per gallon, because folks are using the carts, but they're dealing with bags instead of carts. And then out of that, obviously, they would also get the free, the twelve three overflow bags per year.
I think that there is a, there is an issue that's, you know, we have to address with those disabilities and senior citizens, at least from my conversations with people in the public. And Commissioner, I think this proposal's a good idea. What I would like to see in terms of this particular subject is if we could tie that other page of programs that may have a similar setup, I'm sure that they put in place, you know, protections for disabling elderly, that we may be able to model for ourselves. I'd like to see that if I could, you know, just so we can say we considered a lot of different options in finding out that, you know, maybe one of them is just as good, or ones that we look at are not good. I think it's worth our while in that particular area to see what, to see what that is after. I don't know, maybe somebody has that information, I'm just going to have it myself.
May I? The other thing would be, I've written down on a hardship application, which doesn't just go to elderly, but also you look at the other, the other side of scope, that maybe somebody has a lot of people in their house, maybe someone has a bedridden husband or spouse or a mother who produces a lot of waste because they're bedridden and they're there, they have home health coming in every day, they have lots of things to clean up. And the other end of the spectrum is, what if you're a young family and you have limited income, but you have a lot of waste that you're producing from diapers and, um, what they, so just to have a hardship type application that somebody could apply for. So maybe they need the ninety-five gallon container, but they can only possibly pay for, for the sixty-five gallon container rate.
I'd be happy to discuss something like that, although it could be based on a really hard, non-subjective criteria.
Like maybe it's just a form...
And by a hard criteria, I mean, as in if we, if we leave it up to people on a case by case basis, like let's say we leave it up to staff, or even the commission, on a case by case basis to decide who does and doesn't meet the hardship criteria. That's a subjective standard that has us making decisions that potentially grant more preference to one, one person or another. I think if we set a really hard, hard criteria, as in if you make, you know, if your household is less than twenty thousand dollars a year, you're a disaster. And that's just a hard line, you either meet the criteria or you don't, then... Because really what you're, really what you're discussing doesn't have to do with the, has less to do with the amount of waste being produced, in order to do with just your ability to pay.
And some of those are even time restricted as well. I mean, it may just be for your time that you have angry diapers, maybe, you know, your mom's at your house and she's buying cancer, and you have excess trash for so many months.
Right. I'm happy, yeah, I'm happy to discuss, but it's not a hard line on, on making accommodations for folks who never seen things in poverty or never heard nothing on hand. But, but some of this stuff, like, you know, like the young family living in it, come and kids and diapers, and we've, we've both been there, right? And first of all, the, the decision to, to use disposable diapers, it is a choice. It's not, it's definitely not a necessity. And our, you know, our family has a pretty limited income, and we've had, you know, we've had kids and diapers, and we're, and we still use the, the smaller cans, or we still, you know, only put out more empty cans a week. But even, but even the, I mean, a large family with, you know, let's say you've got a large family with five or six people living in the house, I mean, they, that family naturally consumes more water than their neighbors.
Right.
And pays a larger water bill. They naturally eat more food than their neighbors and have a higher grocery bill. And I, and I don't think that's necessarily unfair for somebody who's consuming more of a service, you know, to, to pay for that consumption. And I'd say it's the same with, you know, I'd say that's the same with however serviced. I mean, anybody, there are choices anybody can make to reduce their consumption. But let's say you've got, you know, six people in the family using the large can, using the ninety-five gallon can, that's two dollars apiece. You know, that's, that's two dollars per person. They're still, they're still paying less per person than, than the single person with the medium sized can. They're paying as much per person as the childless couple with the medium sized can. You know what I mean, like that?
Right, but it would still be nice to know that they can have an option of possibly filling out an application maybe as a bulk if they needed it, once they're qualified.
Agreed, agreed. I mean, if they have, and if the family you're describing is making fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, then they can, they can afford to take what they consume. If the, if the family you're describing is, is at the poverty level, then I would, I agree. Is that, I guess we don't, I don't see a problem with that. So I assume that's legal, right? I assume it's legal for us to offer hardship exemptions. I don't know if we do it anywhere else, we don't do that with sewer rights that we built. Does the supply corps do that with any of their rates? Anybody's aware of? Do we have, do we have any rates for anything in the city? Is there any precedent for this?
Well, I mean, if you're a franker, I don't, and that's where I keep going back to the fact, but when it comes to looking at hardships and disabilities and things, I think you really need to, so that we can say that we've thoroughly vetted the subject, you know, because as, as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner, that no one, we're not going to make any decision that's going to make everybody happy. So, but what we can say is that we, as a commission, have looked at all the evidence and thoroughly vetted a particular topic. I think in order to do that, we need to see what other communities have similar programs to do for hardships and, you know, maybe disabilities and things like that. And that, I mean, number one, that will tell us sort of what the precedence among those forty-five percent of communities in the country that do have paid to your systems have. But it may also give us another idea or ways to qualify those particular types of hardships and disabilities. That's not, my true sense on that particular issue.
That's a, that's a fair point. In terms of the, in terms of the hybrid system, which is driving, in terms of offering folks got the tendency to, to choose just straight bags instead of cans. That, that concept actually has been, that's in, that's in one of the papers or studies that, that the commission's seen, it was in, I mean, it's not particularly a large study.
Yes.
But it's, it's self-familiar.
Yes.
That discusses the, you know, some of the possi, the possibility of, of using that hybrid and some of the pros and cons of each. But that, that is a solution that has worked for, that has worked for a number of communities.
But, you know, the same person, you're going to get a person who's going to say, "Well, I'm not strong enough to carry the can or the bag now, or I have to have my neighbor come and do that." So to be able to say, "Well, if we really look at it, we need to look at what, what all the other options in terms of, you know, to do." That way we can say, "Well, we've really looked at this issue, and we, I feel like this is the best set of the other options that we have to help you cope with this."
And to make one more note on that, if somebody has a hard time carrying a can or a bag right now, that's, that's not a, a problem that would be unique to a pay-as-you-go system. If somebody has that problem now, then they have the problem under our current system. And so I think one of the things we're talking about doing, one of the things we're talking about doing potentially would be to increase their level of service. Because right now, somebody has a hard time moving a can or a bag, they have a hard time moving a can or bag and forth. Flat fee came out currently, and that's not going to change with any new, with any new fee structure. But hopefully it is something we can still address.
Right, and if we're, if we're the processes of looking at the system and what works and what doesn't, then that's something that, you know, we can help out with if we do.
Having said that, in terms of the, the concept of offering folks, right now, right now, I think, I have talked to lots of folks who, who, you know, I've talked to lots of folks who say that they, they right now set their stuff out in bags, they just can't handle the cans, they only set up two, three bags a week. They would really like to just be able to set out bags instead of cans. And folks are, folks are calling in, and I, and I know you've got a similar question. I think it even, I think it was even on the listed questions you provided to us, maybe. But that's, that's something, considering the fact that folks are asking that question right now, I'd really like to be able to go ahead and give... I'd, I'd really like to be able to go ahead and give, give folks an answer.
Well, I mean, that's the question that we're gonna ask now. You've got, in order to anticipate, and, and as I said earlier, I think that that is a good idea. I just, I feel like that we have to make sure that we thoroughly look at all the different options out there. I'm, I'm sure maybe some of you all have, but I haven't. I, I feel like that I will need some of these departments' help to give an idea of that. And I'm, I mean, I, I'm, you know, the timeframe in terms of what I'm thinking of doing that, is, you know, have something, you know, by, by next week, you know, that we do have that, to make the final determination.
So even though we're not, uh, even though, even though we're not prepared to make the final determination on that, are, are we comfortable saying that we do intend to make accommodations for elderly disabled and folks who are likely to have a hard time?
Yeah.
The county, I live in the county, and when they distributed all their rollout carts, talking to Mark Barrett this morning with the county, he said six months of, it was kind of a crazy time, a lot of questions. And in the county, they have a lot of long driveways, a lot of topography issues. And there was kind of a learning curve that went on with that process. They got to the point where most of the people, a lot of the people just leave their carts out at the street.
Right.
Exposed. And there were, but there was about a six-month period of people who were calling and complaining. Some were complaining that it was unsightly. Some people said, "Well, I just can't give them back to my house because of where I live." And it's kind of gone through about a year or two to where it's not an issue anymore. But they've just kind of come to allow the carts being set out, exposed. Our current ordinance, there's a big issue with exposure of carts. Some of the downtown businesses don't have back alleys, they don't have back doors. Some citizens that live, uh, topography doesn't allow them to roll those carts up to their house. We get, I think one, come to our meeting the other night where it'd be very difficult for him to roll the cart out. So one option would maybe be to allow some people that have maybe disability or topography, some issue to where they could keep their cart out, to where they wouldn't be subject to fine and not bring the cart back every night because of some particular issue, to where they could use bags and put the bags in the can. And it wouldn't be a health hazard because the container, you know, the dogs and raccoons can't really get into that can. So maybe that's something to consider as that is another option, to allow the carts to be exposed every day, every week because of some special circumstance. Rather than doing camped up below the back.
Just ladies and gentlemen on Union Street, please.
Right.
Can't pull out those steps and, and, uh, that would be a violation. I still feel like that, that we need to, I think, certainly maybe I'm more voice, you know, for this commission to really make a decision today on the can, but in that particular instance, I just, I don't, I wanna say that I've done the research.
Before we leave that discussion, uh, I think we run the, the risk of having a real abundance of trash cans at the street level. For example, if there were a, uh, apartment, uh, of, building with eight apartments in it on St. Clair Mall, and each of those eight had two bins, then you've got sixteen bins on the street if we decided to allow that. And then we're gonna have other merchants and people who kept them.
We should maybe, if I could, the first one I'd say is probably one or two. Will that, this is kind of a few points. Will that, if, if some people allow to put the bags out and some people have the cans out, does that cause problems with the automated system? Does that slow that process down? And then would it offset the, I mean, the, I mean, we're, we're talking about some positions being eliminated later?
Well, I understand the automated system, they need to have three feet, uh, either side of the can. It's pretty space that a arm can come out and get a hold of that can. We visited a site last week, Pinnacle Court, there's several apartment complexes that are very large. They have no place to keep these cans. I talked to one of the owners and they said, "Well, we can put them underneath the stairs." Well, then that could be recycling and a garbage cart for however many units stuffed under the stairs of these apartments. I don't know if that's a fire code issue. Uh, they weren't built to accommodate the carts and they don't have dumpster pads that they could roll them into and enclose them because they've been using the city, they've been garbage cans.
That actually was my question. What I meant was, if some people can put out bags and not put out the can, and there's a driver on the vehicle that's coming to use the automated system, so it would just be one person on the truck? Because that was what you said earlier, the plan would be after a few years, that eliminate, they need to have two people on the trucks.
I, I would say that the person, like the overflow truck that's going out to pick up bulky items would pick up the overflow bags as well. So the idea is to automate as much as you can, but also you'll have to run a overflow route to get the bulky items.
And that was kind of the second answer. Will that cause, if some people, if there's a lot of people, I don't know how many people could do it, we don't know. Based on the calls that I've received from elderly folks and people who have physical disabilities, I don't know, I mean, I did. Could that, I guess what I'm saying, that could almost be a problem, where one overflow truck wouldn't be able to handle just the geographic, um, requirement to that could be a problem. Just something, that's something to think about. And another one that made me think about it, when we talked about the width of the cans and the space needed to pick up the cans. In those situations where some cans would be left out on the street, there could be places like, I'm thinking, like Indian Hills, putting subdivisions that doesn't have sidewalks and, and curbs and everything and all that. That could possibly be parking problems. If there's a, if people are leaving out a lot of those, it's, I'm just saying, it could. And then on those subdivisions or areas of town where there's a sidewalk, there's no streets, and there's off-street parking in front of the house. But there's no clear way people, some people have the driveways, how can those, those cans be placed behind the vehicles so that the arm wouldn't have access to those? And some of those, now, I don't know how many of those are. These are just some other thoughts that I've, that I've fleshed out too. There's some other things to think about. This is, this is also, we, we've discussed a lot, uh, perhaps that you missed a lot of meetings and, well, I missed that one. But what I'm saying is, the thing on the, the twenty, what, what, on the allowing people to put out bags versus cans, it just seems to me that that defeats the purpose of going to the, my, my system. And I'm just saying, just something to think about because I don't know how many people would, would need to do that.
I think you're right. I mean, we're not, there's no way to go fully automated without reducing our level of service. I mean, we, we've talked, we've talked about this in the context of continuing to pick out the bulky oversized item. So no matter what, we're going to need, we're gonna need an overflow truck. And those are the trucks, and, and in terms of the, the system we're talking about, all the trucks we have now can be considered potential overflow trucks. They're all trucks that require, that need to be manned. And so it's, if, if we, we have one of that resource, if, uh, if it turns out we need it, would require any extra, would, would require anything that we don't already have?
But I guess my question is, after somebody, the truck's, the life cycle of the truck, you dictate just that at some point we have to replace it if they're going to an automated system. The whole idea was to buy the automated trucks and face these other gaps. So it seems to me that's another cost that we hadn't thought about up until this point. And, and I don't know, I'll ask some questions to the public force if we could get some thoughts on that. It just seems to me if we had, if, if we had one overflow truck, that's one thing, but the geographic metropolitan community would be, would one overflow, overflow truck be enough to go around in a, whatever timeframe that could be, seven AM to four AM, I mean, four PM or three thirty PM? That's what I'm saying, the efficiency of that system would it break down? That's what I'm asking.
Well, some areas are probably not the goal. We, we already knew we could serve with the automated truck. That's too much honesty.
Fully automated.
Fully, yeah, fully automated. It's not, there's gonna be some areas in town that, uh, due to parking on the streets out front, but there's gonna be a lot of challenges. So you kind of pick out the neighborhoods you can serve with your automated truck and focus those trucks to those certain neighborhoods like Indian, or Indian Hills and Silver Lake and Meadows. So I guess you're gonna have to just, you're gonna have areas which, which we, right now, we know we can't serve. And so that's, that's, that's a known going into this program.
One of my thoughts on that is when, it was just a second here, for people who couldn't get their carts to the front of the residents or they don't have a place to store a cart and they move it on the street. And I don't think that leaving, leaving carts on the street is a, is a good, doesn't look, to me, it doesn't, it wouldn't look good to have those in historic district or any, any neighborhood, but specifically in historic district. So people who have to put out the bags, if we, if the free bags are allowed to be put out instead of having a container with a small container and having any bags for immediate size and on up, because people can't physically get containers here in front of the street. Well, my concern is, do a one overflow truck be able to serve the city because people are, there might be, there's X number in route number one, X number route number two, X at three, X at four. And just the time crunch of seven AM to three thirty PM for where they start, would, I don't know, would that allow them to not tell them to do that with one truck? Or would you have to purchase another truck? Because one truck, depending on how many people put out the bags, may or may not be able to handle the volume in that workday without having to get a second. That, that's when that came up, I just said, I think of that. And, and they may not be able to, I don't know, but that's what I'm asking.
We have discussed this, we have discussed this repeatedly. I'm, I'm sorry, if you, if you're on my day, what a prior discussion.
That's, that to me seems.
But if we have to, we're gonna slowly phase into the automated. So right now, we have nothing but overflow trucks. Within the context of this discussion, right now, we have nothing but overflow trucks. We're talking about slowly replacing them over a course of, over a course of a few years with automated trucks. As we move further and further towards an automated system. If over time, we determine that we need one less automated truck and one more overflow truck as a result of the bags, we'll have plenty of, I mean, I think we'll have plenty of time to see that in advance. And, and simply opt instead of updating to an, to a, an automated truck.
Now, that, that's what I'm saying. And I don't know how to, what I'm trying to say is, if, if accommodations, we're talking about accommodations being made for people who have hardships, as Commissioner said, maybe it could be a hardship application. We don't know how many of those folks would say that they need their hardship application. And what I'm trying to say, my point is, I know we have overflow trucks. But say that we're in a, a neighborhood that's fully, has a fully automated truck. We don't know how many people are gonna ask for that hardship to be able to put bags out versus the cans. So that's gonna require either the driver to get out of the automated truck or simply two guys up there. And what I'm saying is, if there's, the way that the, that can be spread out with, say there's, I don't know how many people say. Say we have six hundred people that say, "I need a hardship." Maybe a lot, maybe low, maybe high, maybe way low. I suspect it actually could be low. And we have one truck. Well, that, my question and concern is, one truck, an overflow truck, being able to go out and said, you know, I guess you'd radio and said, automated driver says, "Okay, we have, we have three bags at eleven seventeen West Third Street that need to be picked up." So the overflow truck is gonna be in that area. Because the way it works now is one truck is assigned to an area and they do the garbage pickup and they go back and they clean the trucks up and finish all that up. And I'm just concerned about the timeframe of, you, you, when you all said one overflow, there'd be an overflow truck that would be a supplement to the automated pickup trucks. And just the, the way that the geographic concern would be is that one truck's not gonna be assigned just to one route. Is that correct? That is the point. You're talking about having an overflow truck to supplement the automated trucks. So if you have one overflow truck to cover the whole city, my question was, would that overflow truck be able to handle it? Not necessarily like the volume, the, the amount of just having to drive. It's not gonna be a route because they don't know.
Would they just follow the route of that day versus the whole city?
And that's what I don't know.
And what do we do now?
For what?
What we do now is, is, what we do now is way less efficient than even the, the scenarios that Commissioner makes describe.
That's what I'm asking. We're just saying, it seems like it's creating a system that would be really less efficient by having an automated truck and having the same overflow as our guy.
What, what we do now is.
And with that overflow truck be able to.
But you don't do every neighborhood every day. So it's not like you'd be running an overflow trucks from Collins Lane, Indian Hills on every day. You have set days of the neighborhood and that's the neighborhood that's over.
But I'm, how, how are we, I can remember that.
Or pickup days a week.
Right, but, but, and the geographic thing there, would, okay, um, say, would we pick up on Tuesday?
Would we pick up? Pick up, uh, mostly the, signal red. I mean, we, we kind of broke down into equal areas four times when we had four pickup days a week. So we kind of broke it down, Tuesday and Friday. So would one truck cover the Tuesday route for overflow?
That's what I'm saying. Because the way that, the, the way that that, some areas are spread out more than others because of the, it's based on the households. So there's, one area may have more driving miles in it. One, one pickup area, let's say Tuesday's area, may have more miles geographically than Wednesday, or Thursday, or Friday. So that's what I'm trying to say, is trying to go, that, is it gonna follow just the automated truck? Or is it gonna be out there just on demand or what's it gonna be doing? Because if it, if you have a larger geographic, for example, think, think about it in terms like this. Tykeville has the most mileage of any highway district in Kentucky. Louisville, you know, Joseph County is, is compact, so try and cover a small geographic area that is more difficult. It's easier than covering a large geographic area. So it, it's like a snowmobile, they follow the same route and they, they do the, the route pattern the way the driver feels is most efficient. Would the overflow truck just be out there randomly driving or following the automated truck? And if so, then it seems like we're duplicating or putting two trucks out instead of one. That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get at, and, and I may have said it the wrong way, but you get what I'm trying to say, right?
Like if you have the automated truck going, do you have the overflow truck just following?
Right, or is that overflow truck just gonna be just kind of driving back and forth? And if so, that's gonna be a less efficient way of doing it because it's gonna be driving more miles as it's exactly back and forth.
Or you have a call system that the overflow truck maybe goes out an hour and a half later.
That'd be based on the driver ready to go back to public force, this guy's saying.
Saying where the overflow might be.
And it'd make a difference each week, and that's what I'm trying to say. The, the mileage time that the driver has to drive that truck.
Wasn't part of the test.
I didn't include that in it. But that's, but those are things I'm saying, just made me think of that, just now, because this was something we hadn't, really thought about before. But you, you're gonna start saying, Commissioner, right?
I, 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 we had.
But if we have two trucks running the same route.
Well, if we had, because we had said the hardship thing until today, that I would lose it, I hadn't, unless I missed that. I hadn't heard the hardship thing until today.
In all fairness, in all fairness, Commissioner, and you know this is what we do. You haven't participated in many of these discussions. You've gotten a bit left or a number of, and you've just given many entire meetings.
Also, I, I was, you're saying that, because that's not based on that. And I'm not gonna sit here and say that.
We've been, we've been taking the meetings, posting them online.
It had been brought up before, so has anybody heard this before, where we talked about hardships? This is the first about burden, so I'm just gonna ask each, it's.
We, we, we must have got, we, we, a proposal.
But we haven't had a proposal until today, and I'm aware of it.
We don't have a proposal of, of the hardships today. The issue of.
That's a question.
Right, that's what we're really trying to, trying to get an understanding. We haven't even qualified for hardship dispatch, so, so quite frankly, to answer the question of, well, what's the burden gonna be? Well, we can't even estimate the burden until we qualify what the hardships are.
what the hardship is gonna be. And, and to take it to a next, another level, one of the things in our previous discussions that we have agreed upon is that, if you notice, I think that we removed the fully automated trucks from the budget line because it was very expensive piece of equipment that we didn't feel like we needed to buy. So the argument of where is the overflow of the truck gonna be is a moot point for us right now, because we're not gonna have any fully automated trucks right now, and there's not one on the, on the agenda for the budget this year. So I, I see looking down the road that we can look to, to answer that question.
We may have to point out the truck thing.
Exactly. We have to look, we don't know what the cost, goes back to the cost, we don't know what the total cost is gonna be until we get into this thing, and as Commissioner Head and today, first proposal that we've heard of an overflow, uh, hardship application, that will change the dynamic of people who are wanting to use, uh, a small can, large can, medium can versus if you do that, they can put out three bags, or six bags, or nine bags, up to they can, so we had even, I mean, quite, the bags, which that was the first, we finally clarified the, the size of the bags today, based on, the public works department has already sent out a survey saying it's going to allow twelve overflow bags a year. And that isn't even defined, that's, that's my point. Somebody will just say, well, just put a hardship in for, at least there's, there's no definition of that, that's what I'm trying to get at. And maybe I'm not able to communicate that point, Commissioner Head and understands what I'm saying, and that's, that's my question. But I, I don't think it's fair to say that I, I missed some meetings because I walked out this way, I took the command to do this nap too, but that doesn't mean that I'm trying to shorten my duties, I could call for recess if, if we need to do that, but I think other members should feel free to, to, but what I'm still making is that we have audio and video approved, and the record, the record can demonstrate that, uh, without setting actual limits, that the commission agreed months ago that we would, that we would need to make exceptions to elderly and disabled. And the, the concept, without any limits set up, the concept of a waiver hasn't come up before, so I'm just, I'm just disagreeing with the idea that that hasn't been discussed yet. And in terms of the size of the bags being said, we already discussed the bags, we already, it was around the time of the green vision meeting, it was almost three, three months ago, we discussed twelve free bags per year, and we discussed them at, at this size in terms of, uh, the size of, you know, being the size of the kitchen bag, ten to twelve, when it comes down. So I'm just, I'm just disputing the claim that we haven't discussed that before. We have, we have proof. Well, I'm talking about the hardship bags that we talked about today, when somebody said we'll put out, we'll allow you to put out, what, three bags if they can't fit in the container, I had not heard anybody discuss that so far. And if anybody else has heard that, that, send me out, if you haven't heard, that was the first, I'm just asking, is that the first that's been brought up, and came up now, it came up again last week.
But my overall feeling is that I think we're going back and forth here in that, on something that's a moot point at this moment, because we have, because we have not qualified, uh, you know, what, we could qualify a hardship to be something very narrow for a town, and it'd have very little cost effect. We could also, uh, qualify it as something very broad, which would have a larger, until we have seen, you know, you know, what other communities have done and are actually, because I, in my opinion, I think we're harking on something that we could discuss it, you know, once we have more information to make a more, uh, sound argument, or a more sound idea of what that means, that's when I would say you, you would discuss that. You see what I'm saying, Commissioner?
Well, yeah, but, I mean, my point being earlier, we, we have not had, it's so confusing to keep up with because it seems like it changes a lot, because we don't have a, an ordinance proposal in front of us to look at, to, to draw from, to, to look at a document, to make amendments to, if you wanna call it that. That's why it's difficult to remember that vast amount of information that we had to go back and forth, whether this, this got, this, this got, when I was, you know, in the men's room, or, or somebody else was, I don't, it, it's hard to keep up, and if it's hard for me to keep up, I don't have the diff, the public center.
It's harder for us to keep up with, I mean, it's been lots of months and months and talks, and some of it seems kind of circleish.
Right, and so I appreciate that, and so that's what I was saying earlier, to try to get it right center. Put something in black and white in front of us, and then we got a document to go by, we can all say that we make amendments to it.
That's just what I got written down here, that's what I've, I've been purring at. It seems to me the process is gonna turn around. I would say that since the majority of the commission wants to implement a pay as you throw or what have you, then staff would be able to come to us with some kind of plan, and then the commission, if they didn't like, then you have something before you to, to look at, you know, discuss when you get in order, I mean, I, I think with some of the discussions we have, we're on now, uh, could have been handled better, but never, just, but let's get back to what we're writing down for the agenda, uh, as I understand you, we are supposed to be discussing things, these questions that you, when people call in, they, you can give you.
Yeah, and how, how they make them.
How far, how far are we down in this?
I think we're pretty far down, and part of what we're doing.
Just try to get, pull this back in there and try to address these things.
And we've been going over some stuff that, that's kind of redundant, it's already been communicated, but we're, we're doing this today, and we enter stuff, getting all this, getting as much of the information as we can clarify, clarify, so we, we can put this together in one place, so I think everybody's on the same page there. I've got the, uh, we need to discuss Dylan. We, we have a, I assume everybody has seen this, this list of questions that the staff provided, as the folks are calling in on. Some of these we've already addressed in terms of discussion today, but there's some others. One question, will there be a refund issued for previously purchased recycle carts? My inclination is no, I mean, I understand, I understand the frustration, the pages on the whole data we offered for free. I think the only thing that's appropriate for us to do, if we're gonna make any adjustments, is to change rules going forward, to change rules retroactively, that opens up a black hole, a black hole that's starting to get out of.
Could we, just an idea, like even with that, if someone has purchased, could we maybe possibly offer some extra bags, or something?
I'm, 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 you open second. And I know, we gave some folks more bags than others.
If you want to base it on, uh, what kind of containers were they purchased already? Is that a thirty five gallon container?
Some folks have already purchased the rollout recycling bins for hot can. What was it offered at, yeah?
About fifty dollars, about fifty people bought, so not a whole lot, just about fifty.
But you're opening up a slippery slope if you do that, because, as I've been told a number of times, a few years, five or six years ago, the commission stated that we couldn't, uh, they didn't decide a can, so someone had to go out and buy a new can because of that. Do we then refund that? I mean, where do you draw the line then? Because essentially, they purchased the recycling can because they felt like the thing was like, they didn't want the city offered at the time. So that was a mandate by the city that you have to pay for that if you want that. The same goes if you want your trash picked up, you have to purchase a, a new trash can. So where do you draw, if you, if you make that exception, where do you draw the line as to, you know, what we're refunding or not?
And one response that I think we could, one response that I think we could make for folks who have already ordered large recycling carts and a bill somewhere that they paid for something that folks are later gonna get for free, I mean, we can't point out, if somebody's recycling that much, then they're almost certainly going to a smaller medium can, and we're reducing their five dollar monthly bill to four dollars a month or zero dollars a month. And so they're, you know, I understand that, that they wish they hadn't paid for something that everybody else is gonna get for free, but at the same time, we are gonna be reducing their monthly bills, right? I mean, if somebody, if somebody has the rollout recycling cart, let's assume that they're recycling a lot, if somebody's recycling a lot, then their monthly, monthly bill's gonna be reduced from what it is currently. Right now, folks are paying sixty dollars a year, so they will, I mean, they'll save their money at least. But if they bought a recycling cart because of recycling order, then does it make sense to give them free garbage bins that they may or may not use, and encourage that goes into the landowners, or is it, I'm just taking it from a logic standpoint, not that you are, I'm just, didn't ever hear.
A good Christmas gift for somebody.
From a legal perspective, you could do that. I mean, the commission can make a determination that if you, you know, bought a sixty five gallon container for your recycling items within the last year, we're gonna provide you with X bags. The commission could do that, I'm not saying that it's, it's a last decision, but it could do that equally.
My inclination would be to not do that, and to reward the folks who are already recycling that much with a reduced garbage fee, which is already planned anyway. There's another question on this, this sheet, uh, it notes that the storage of carts could become a problem for some citizens, and just to note, that's something else, that's something that could also be addressed by letting folks choose bags instead of cans, if they were satisfied. Commissioner Head and mentioned Dylan, that is a, that is a question. I think the commission agreed a few months ago that it would be counterproductive to do anything other than monthly billing. It appears that the question has come back up, not a good enough issue, bill on a, a less regular basis. My position hasn't changed, I, I don't think anything makes sense of a monthly billing.
So Dylan, month, does it just be, um, like we did, sending out requests on, so we just bill them out once a month?
It depends on, on who does the billing, but, I mean, the ideal would be for it to be tacked on to an existing bill.
Which one at this moment? Doesn't seem like we have it.
And that's.
Uh, we, we met numerous times with, uh, plant board, hoping that we could add that to the monthly bill, and they're not inclined to do that.
My understanding is that our staff never met with the plant board, that we met with staff of the plant board. My saying is.
I apologize, no, we have not met with the plant board. We, I am now a board member, I'm, I'm a staff member, I meet with tiny four, and it's the manager of the plant board. I, I don't make the agenda, nor would I be so forward as to ask to be on their agenda. But, but our staff met with their staff, and that was, uh, what we were told, is they're not inclined. As a matter of fact, they would like to release the responsibility of, of other billing that they do for us.
You're being kind of brave.
Frankly diplomatic, but, uh, so since they told us they were not inclined to do it, uh, then, then we've spent a considerable amount of time looking at other options, and the most favorable option other than the plant board, uh, seems to be this company who, uh, Steve and Jeff have, have worked with, and I, Mr. Skaaf also, uh, and, and they offered to do it for seventy five hundred dollars per billing. And so Mr. Dawson, trying to, trying to look at the cost of it, uh, proposed that we bill it by annually. However, the commission has discussed doing it monthly. So then you get into a comparison of fifteen thousand dollars compared to ninety thousand dollars. So that's where we are.
So then, the choices to bill monthly at that rate would be ninety thousand dollars a year, and a ten percent cost reduction of an operating expense of two hundred thousand dollars, which basically thinks that's a, one hundred, one hundred, yeah, basically just a hundred thousand for us to, for a year.
I think there's a couple of factors that aren't gonna be taken into account, though. I mean, one is obviously if we're giving folks, if we're trying to incentivize, incentivize folks to reduce their waste and increase recycling, we have the opportunity to reduce their monthly bill more than twice a year, as I think we, we're only doing it once a year or twice a year, and then folks can only reduce their bill if, once or twice a year. If we do monthly billing, folks can reduce their bill anytime, you know, anytime they want to. And it's, and also, I mean, if we're sending out the, the sewer bill by way of the plant board, and I, I think it's a shame you didn't approach the plant board directly, because I think the previous plant board probably would have, would have been happy to include, probably would have been happy to handle, handle both billing. The makeup of the plant board has since changed, and I, and I, I couldn't even warrant the justice where the new board stands on that. One thing I, we, we do currently, how much do we currently pay the plant board to handle our sewer bill?
Roughly a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand a year, so.
Fifty hundred.
So that isn't too different than the seventy five hundred per billing that we're looking at. How much do we pay this, what does that come out to for the bill?
Like, it's ninety K, if we, come back to fifteen, or the seventy five hundred dollars.
No, right now, we're comparing the sewer, compared to the proposed.
Twenty, twenty three thousand.
Change it.
You see, the one thing, the one issue we got, if I can say one thing, uh, you know, one, one thing we got right now is, uh, you know, we pay them, we pay the plant board about twenty three thousand, almost twenty four thousand dollars a quarter to, uh, to bill and co, and collect, but in this situation, we've, we've gotta do the collection on our side, so it's, it's ninety thousand dollars that we collect on our side. So I, you know, right now, I'm, I'm down to like four staff folks trying to cut my costs down, but if, you know, if I, if I do a monthly billing for the garbage, I'll have, I'll have to add another person for sure, there's no way that I can, I can absorb that amount of labor that we take to, we'll take to collect those, those garbage bills. And, and I need to have somebody staffed, you know, to answer the phone calls and stuff, as folks call in and stuff, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the, the largest expense in billing, it isn't the administration, it isn't the calculation of the numbers, it's the actual physical putting together, it's actually physically printing the bill, putting in the envelope, putting postage on the envelope.
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's gonna be our biggest cost, for sure, yeah, then I've got, you know.
And so, but that's my point, is that if we're, it doesn't make any sense to discuss doing that twice for two separate bills, as it, it seems that we could save money by combining the bills, by, by combining this with the sewer bill, and it, and it sounds like the plant board isn't cutting this, it sounds like the plant, it sounds like what the plant board's charging us is more than seventy five hundred dollars per billing. So if we've got a company that's offering to, to send out a billing at seventy five hundred dollars per billing, and we can move the plant board onto, the sewer bill onto, on.
I've got four customers.
That's true, that's true.
He's, he's fourteen thousand, I'm like.
That's a really good point. But all the same, I mean, it's, it seems that we could still combine, it seems that we could still be efficient combining them.
But you just get.
Except, we don't bill the same entity that the garbage fee's gonna bill. We bill the end user, not the owner, typically, as in the plant board bills. So you're not talking the same database, so you're not talking the same bill anyway.
Well.
At least in many cases.
But from the, the get go of this discussion, I think we've all, I think we've all, the commission agreed a few months ago that ideally, we would prefer to bill the end user and not the property owner. We've only settled on billing the property owner, which would be, would us administratively more efficient and more doable. If we've got a system that's already targeted for the end users, and we can combine the bills, it sounds like that's even more in line.
Look, the, the way the plant board bills though, actually is a hybrid. They bill whoever has signed up for the utility.
Understood.
In some cases, that is the owner, who then pays it and passes it on to the renter.
Sure.
In other cases, it's the renter because that's what the owner says. Frankly, I don't know.
Which is where?
Which is which.
Sure.
Depends on how it's metered to, a lot of that. Well, yeah, if it's a, if it's a apartment, usually there's, there's a single leader for the entire apartment complex. But, but even so, if you've got a single handed resident that somebody owns and they're renting it out, it's their option whether they wanna pay the utility, or whether they want the renter to pay the utility.
I guess my point though is that if we could do the same, if we could apply that same dynamic to the garbage fee, then it seems like that would be a lot more fair that same dynamic to the garbage fee, then it seems like that would be a lot more fair for renters and landlords. Because right now, our goal is for the person generating waste to pay for the waste they generate. And that's the goal. Administratively, we've talked about settling for just getting the bills to the property owners, and letting them work that out between their renters. Now, there's going to be some confusion there between the property owners and the tenants. But if we can give them the opportunity actually, to actually square that responsibility with the billing entity ahead of time, if we could, I mean, if this could be treated like any other utility bill, in some cases landlords pay all their tenants' utility bills. I don't think that's very responsible, but some people choose to do that. In other cases, they expect their tenants to pay their utility bills themselves. I mean, for my money, ideally, that's the way we would handle the garbage fee. And we've discussed not doing it that way because administrative challenges. But one thing is absolutely certain, and I don't think it's really, one thing's absolutely certain, which is that it's inefficient, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense to pay two separate entities to send out two separate bills. I mean, we should do everything we can to reconcile those bills and send them out together, and that would result in cost savings.
I don't disagree with that.
But there are other costs.
Sure.
Collections.
You know, collections. Yeah, that's the issue that I'm looking at. I'm just looking at it percentage-wise. I'm looking at the numbers, but if you're looking at ninety thousand dollars for approximately eleven thousand bills that we send out, to print it, to send it for the postage, and you're looking at an employee to man the phones, to handle the follow-ups and all that, you know, that's approximately one hundred forty thousand dollars a year. That's what it would be annually for us. And if I divide that by five hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know, you're looking at twenty-five percent of the money that we collect going for billing, and that just, to me, that doesn't, those numbers don't make sense, is what I'm saying.
Hey, could I call on recess real quick? I'd use reserving, but I don't want to leave the discussion.
What do we want to do?
Call a five-minute recess?
What are you going to do?
Are we in recess?
Is there going to be a motion?
We did a good thing. We just could take, we just go, just give them all here, he wants them, you don't take them all, bro.
Yeah, kidding, I mean, Commissioner?
So do you think Monday, oh, the surveys or the request board would do Friday, correct? Do you think on Monday, you guys could possibly have some numbers, just to roughly print it up, that Tom can do that, like he did just kind of...
For a count, what, how many are, if you already thought of how many we can...
And just kind of see if you can change the...
Give you kind of a broad...
Similar to the same comment you're playing, this data, I guess, so if that database saved, you could just change the numbers.
Give you a snapshot of what we're doing.
If I may, if one suggested, oh, his survey, looking at property owners.
Right.
I think if we're in a position where we can't go behind...
If we're talking about changing that to bill the individual residents, that might be totally cross-play of where we are today, in some cases.
I've got a little bit of practical experience, not by default, really. My dad's got some rental property, and since he's been sick, I've been kind of handling it. And my folks are all just really struggling to make, it's me. If I pour another forty, fifty dollars on them a year, you know, for the middle-sized can, which I was going to do, you know, they're gonna, they can't do it. They just can't. So I'm going to pay it for them. But, you know, I just, you know, directed the bill last year. I'm already used to it, they're used to it. They haven't paid for the garbage service, they're going to be really confused. And I've already talked to my boss, and I said, "Look, I'm going to cover your can for you." You know, I've got eight people, eight families that have facts, but they're struggling. Now, make the changes.
Officials that are already sending out information saying...
Yeah, now I got the...
Find out exactly what who's going to bill.
Yes, I know if you all were in recess.
Sir?
Are you all in recess? I just want to ask a question. Is there any thought given to using emails and...
I hope you're not asking about email.
You're looking at, if you're adding seventy-five hundred dollars and eleven thousand, that's sixty-eight cents a hit. Why not offer a discount for being able to send it out, an email, confirm it to an address, and send it out? Just send it out by email. You know, they can print it at home if they want to hard talk to the bill, or you're already, on the previous one, you were sending it out twice a year. I understand that the thing was wanting to do it monthly, but if you're going to do it twelve times a year, why not confirm an email address to a physical address where you're doing your pickup, and offer our discount stuff to do that? There is something in town that does that, I mean.
If we offer a discount for emailing, not only could that save people money, but I mean, that discount can be less than our operational, you know, than, we could all come out ahead. I think you're absolutely right. I think we should offer emailing, and we should offer a discount, a relatively small discount, but a discount for folks who take advantage of it. Because that would, I mean, that would save them money and us money at the same time. Middle members of my group, but I can live with that.
We're just, I'll tell you what we're struggling right now. If we, with our billing, if we have a lot of exceptions to our billing right now, you know, we're going to give, when we get the new bill to go out, we're already going to issue credit. You know, those folks have a prepayment that they're going to get credit on there.
Sure.
You know, just the more exceptions you've got, we're struggling with that. That's what we're really struggling. And then if I've got, you know, discounts, and I've got to go in the system and put those in the system. So, you know, the more, the more hands-on, the more times administratively we have to touch a bill, the more opportunity we have for error, is what I'm trying to say.
I get that. In terms of the, in terms of, I guess, if I could use an analogy, compared this to gardening, you know, it takes a lot of work to grow a garden. It's something that you have to work on off-season long. You start in, you start in the spring, you plant the garden, prepare the soil, et cetera. Then you work all the way through the harvest until winter time comes. The more work you put into it at the beginning, in terms of actual labor, as in if you, you know, if you plant it right, and you fill the ground properly, and you mulch when you plant, et cetera, there's a lot of stuff in there that doesn't actually have to be done in order to grow the garden. But the more work you front-load at the beginning of the process, the more efficiently the entire season runs. So, for example, you don't need to mulch at the beginning of the year, but if you do mulch at the beginning of the year, that's more work when you're going, and that's more man-hours when you're going, but then you don't have to weed all year long. So, I mean, it's, does the analogy make any sense? As in, I understand that some of these exceptions would take, would take a little more work and man-hours upfront, as long as they result in, in long-term efficiency and cost savings. I think that works.
Two points with respect to billing. In my experience, where the utility bill is not tied to either the water bill or the cable bill, your number of folks that don't pay the bill is going to be much greater. So that's why you, in my opinion, you're better to bill the property owner, because you can locate them. The tenant is going to be more transient and more difficult to collect the overdue amount from. And I've seen that in significant amounts for some utilities that I represent. So you need to bill the homeowner. And then with respect to the email billing, I think that's a good idea, but you need to be very careful about the amount of any discounts you provide, because that's going to almost inherently discriminate against elderly, because there are many people that are sixty-five years and older that just are not, they don't do email.
And I don't think it's a practical, but we also do use it, using email. I don't think it's discriminatory, because everybody has access, everybody has access for you or, you know, for free internet, free...
The conception is true practically, that will look...
I know a lot of people that have attempted to become computer literate by taking courses and everything, but, you know, they're no longer in the workforce, so they don't deal with it every day. And if you don't deal with a computer every day, it's difficult to be competent in that.
How about, is another thing in the mix, since these bills are relatively flat, as in, it's not like somebody's going to be billed three dollars and fifty-eight cents one month, and four dollars and twenty-three cents the next month. There's going to be four dollars, then four dollars, then four dollars. I mean, what about setting up with, you know, automatic payments with banks?
You know, we're, I'm kind of discussing that issue right now, and see if we can do some of that.
Because a lot of that should be managed.
But the payment, as far as the...
Sure, just automatic withdrawals on the thing. Because that's the kind of thing that anybody should be able to handle with a, either a form that they sign in the mail and, or phone calls to their bank. And that's just as cost-effective for the city as the e-billing. That's actually more cost-effective for the city. It just completely cuts out administration and everything. I think offering the same, same type of discount for that, or even just offering that as the alternative to...
But you still have to send, I think you still have to either send an invoice or...
Or email.
Thinking long-term about all of that, taking that all of that, I just read it yesterday, when you're in the courier, you're on a text and apparel, learning how the banks now hook people in as part of this, get automatic, pay to bill automatically, and then people get into that, then go and change banks or whatever, you have all the difficulty to get that done. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there over long-term.
What are the questions that are being raised right now? I know we've got some requests and a few more information.
Let me ask one question. So, let's say the beginning, the cans go out. We got, you know, we've worked up the database. We've got a database where we can send the bills out. Does the commission want to mail out bills monthly, or can we, how do we want to do that?
I understand the expense associated with monthly billing.
It's just, yeah, it's a big, it's a big number.
But I don't understand how the program could even hypothetically work without it. I mean, if the purpose of this is to give folks opportunity to reduce, you know, to reduce their bills by recycling more and wasting less, we had to give them more than one or two opportunities a year to do that.
Well, some folks, what I'm thinking is, like, the folks that are not going to get a bill because they've elected a thirty, thirty-five gallon can, they won't even get, they won't even get a bill. And then the folks that got, you know, get the mid-sized can, they're going to see forty-eight dollar bill as opposed, or, if you look at annual, I'm just doing annual, the easy numbers, forty-eight dollars versus sixty, which would be, you know, if we do it twice, split it in half. So those, all those folks, you know, if the numbers hold true, we estimate, you know, seventy-five percent of the folks are going to get a small bill.
No, I think one of the things that you could do is, on the bill, instead of saying forty-eight dollars, you line up January, February, March, April, May, June, and then you put, you know, four, 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 four dollars in the billing period total at the bottom. That's something you can still show, you know, even if you're month by month, those savings, and still keep it all in one, you know, limit that amount of time you're sending them to be allowed. But I think it still may have the effect unless I'm not understanding the local form.
No, that's, that could work. The bills would all have to be for, you know, previously provided services. So if we were to do what you're describing, we would wait till, like, July to send out a bill for the two to six months. Right?
Well, I mean, I don't see why you couldn't bill ahead of time, and then if somebody's changes or moves or something, then I guess you could, that might be administrative complication.
That does sound like, I mean, that does sound like a complication. But if it's for previous, if it's for previous services, if we're not doing it annually, which billing for services already provided, it would actually be accurate. I mean, I think there's also a lot of, in terms of the incentive, I think there's also value in people actually seeing, seeing the monthly bill. But this is, I mean, if we weren't, if we weren't already sending out monthly... If we sent it out more than once, I mean, less than one, then should we add one? But again, I keep going back to the fact that we're already sending out a monthly bill for service.
Oh, I agree. And I think we need to keep moving forward, trying to get our bills together. I'm not saying that. Maybe we can focus on doing that, but right now, what we've got set up right now, if we can utilize what we've got, all the cost downs, since we have such a big investment on other things, maybe we could minimize our costs a little bit.
A question for the discussions with the plant board staff. This is something we talked about in a few work sessions here. And this is an idea that a plant board, that we mentioned, actually, in the first place, that their reluctance, their reluctance to handle our bills, and just the fact that they get blamed for it. So lots of folks call, and this is true, lots of folks do call the plant board with sewer rates change. I mean, I realize that some folks no-call bills as well, but...
We get, we get calls for it.
I know you all heard for lack of phone calls. But the plant board does get plenty to. And the story they like to tell is that every time sewer rates go up, their cable customers increase. But clearly, you know, it's not the administrative challenge handling the bill. It doesn't say, well, it's more the political challenge, and the fact that they get, they get blamed for the bill. A lot of people think that they're billing for their. And so I can understand, especially, I can understand their reluctance to then take the heat for a garbage bill as well. But one solution that's been discussed here, and it was initially offered by a plant board member, is that we sent, is that the plant board could send out a monthly bill with two pieces of paper inside. One piece of paper on plant board letterhead includes their bill, and the other piece of paper on city letterhead includes the sewer bill and the garbage bill. Is that...
We had that discussion with them, and their comment was they would prefer to send ours out separately. They would prefer...
Not even, they don't even want to say...
Because their rationale is, if they get the envelope and the plant board for two hundred, and the sewers for fifty, they're still getting it one time a bill for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, as opposed to getting one for two hundred now, and two weeks later getting one for fifty. So, yeah, they're opposed to even putting the same envelope. I'm not saying they won't do it, they just don't like the concept.
I get where they're coming from. I do. I think we've also, you know, this commission in particular just takes a lot of heat for going out of our way to make accommodations for the plant board. I'm talking about carpet or carpet, for example. But there's been a lot of discussion about the city's relationship with the plant board. And there's even been a fair amount of mutual agreement among board members, I don't know about staff, but at least among board, among board members of the plant board, the general managers of the plant board, and members of this commission, and a number of them, that we're each tasked with serving the public. And that the public will probably be better served, the more we work together, and the more we help each other serve the public, the better served our mutual constituents will be. So I hear this concern, you're willing to do it, and that makes sense. But from an objective standpoint, it still seems that the public would be better served by getting all the bills in one place. That's just easier to deal with and more efficient anyway. And it seems to be more cost-effective...
Oh, yeah.
For, from the administrative end, if they combined the bills together. So that's, you know, I understand staff's concerns on that, the plant board staff's concerns on that, but that's, I guess that's... So that's, you know, I understand staff's concerns on that, plant board staff's concerns on that, but that's, I guess that's not a concept I'm really willing to let go of yet. And may, and maybe it's something that, uh, that we need to discuss more formally with the plant board itself, because that, that decision is ultimately, that decision is ultimately in their hands.
I, I think, you know, it goes deeper than that because it's to be a marketing, a discussion, and if people are compared to shopping, and they feel like they have to pay their utilities, they have to pay their sewer bill. But maybe there are other things on their bill that they don't have to have, and then in times of decreasing resources like we're living in right now, uh, maybe the plant board is, is seeing, uh, uh, as if, uh, one utility rate goes up, maybe customers are dropping off of things like, uh, TV, uh, stations that they're, you know, selectively, uh, you know, enjoying, and as their total cost of the bill goes up, they might say, this is something we could do without. And so it's having a detrimental effect to that particular thing that they drop. And so the plant board has all that, uh, wide of services, and so they worry about people dropping certain services as other rates go up. So they're, they're looking at the marketing aspect of it.
Do we know when the next plant board meeting is?
I used to meet on Tuesday.
I mean, we've been calling lots of joint meetings lately, and I don't know if this necessarily necessitates a joint meeting. But I think it would be just to, to try and have at least one formal conversation with the actual plant board in a formal meeting. Are there any objections to, what do you have in mind?
I was gonna suggest, uh, because it might be us all to invite the chairperson of the plant board, you know, they're gonna deal on, on the board, invite the chairperson and sort of explain what we're looking for, and lay out some of those options, and if they feel like that, it can build to a point where we can't have a joint meeting like that, and get something that I don't think we're able to do it on the board, uh, without, it would mean we might be a better idea if the board is feeling.
As in inviting a, a member of the plant board, representative of the chairman?
Yeah.
One of our.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Is there any other questions or objections?
Did you just say?
I can do anything. I have a hard time hearing.
Listen, does anyone have objections to inviting the chairperson of the plant board to our next meeting to pose this question to the?
To pose the question of billing?
Of billing, yeah. See if there's still some middle ground that we need on this.
I don't have objections, but could we accomplish it through, uh, just a communication letter or something that our?
I would think it, I would think it goes to chief manager. Why don't we personally, if you should.
We've, we've had those discussions.
Why don't, why don't we just direct, why don't we just direct our, our city councilor, president of the country to attend the next plant board meeting? Because it's, it's important that, it's important that, that, um, just, just getting one board member's opinion, you know, even the chairperson can't speak for, for the actual plant board, only the board can do that. If, if we as a board, but we, but one way to actually achieve full communication between the two boards would be for we as a board designate a representative, the most appropriate representative, being the city manager, to go bring our concerns as a board to their board, and then you have the equivalent of a board-to-board discussion, as opposed to just one representative of their board talking with our entire board. Does that make any, does that make any sense?
Why, why couldn't the city manager talk to the, to the, their director, executive director, ask the executive director to talk to the board? And get, and come back with you?
I mean, in very blunt terms, I think, I think we're kinda asking the, I think, like I said, this, this idea about the, about, about separating bills and sending them out together came from a plant board member. These discussions never got passed, plant board staff, to their, to their actual decision makers, and I think clearly we need to be talking with the decision makers. Because it's their decision. I mean, if, you know, we keep giving staff the opportunity to not even bring the question to the decision makers.
I'm just saying that the, the executive director of the, of the plant board could address that to the board and get it come back. I, he may recall that two years ago, when we first put in this garbage thing, uh, the, the, and the idea of that bill for that two years ago, was that to try to get the plant board to do that? And I believe the city manager might even have gone over there and, and dealt with what you suggested now, and that they have covered that down, I believe, that's what I was thinking about. If we get this thing, with, uh, we, we, commission problem, once you get a field, make sure we get some back from the board, whether additional department, is what you're talking about. The proper management panel, that's all.
We can just, I mean, I'm also happy you've created a lot of leeway in terms of how you approach this, but I think the only point I'm getting at is that this is, this is definitely a request that we would like made of, of the decision makers of that, and not just, and not just the, the staff. So when that gets communicated to the board by you or by their executive director, by way of you, you know, that's really exciting, exciting point, so long as they have these questions and concerns, actually, we just could, the board itself.
Well, I think we're somewhat found new ground, so I'm thinking that, I'm not sure of the right course to take, um, to be honest with you. And I'm just trying to, while there's a commission, correctionary, I, I think we do need to, if we approach it, I think we need to have a clear request, a clear message.
I think that, I think it's clear request to be.
I, I sort of, I sort of turned this around, and I think, uh, well, how would you all feel if Mr. Smith came to you rather than the board came to you? I don't make that much of a difference.
I mean, I, if the plant board had somebody to bring, that's, I'd be perfectly comfortable hearing it from Mr. Smith on the record rather than with their entire board.
Which may.
I think one of the things is under the, the statute that is just, it does say the city manager, we, they, it's on the table. So I don't have a problem with that. The question is, though, could you accomplish the same thing if, if the board, the majority of our board decides this is what we would like to request of the plant board? I'd have to go meet with them, if you could just send it in writing, requesting that they, they, the board meeting. But soon it would likely be the board meeting.
Because.
I, I don't, I'm just trying to make it more.
Could, could this board have a two-person committee and actually talk with two, with their board?
I think what you're saying, because of the open meetings, open meetings, it'll still require public numbers, because it's with us being only five, that two is still, uh.
Oh, my question is, the technical question, under the open meeting law, any committee of this board commissioners, of the city commission, is still gonna be open, regardless of whether it's two members or three members or one member, because it is a subcommittee of this commi- commission. It's still gonna be subject to open meetings, and I don't know if that's what you're asking me about.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not trying to avoid any transparency.
That didn't mean that, that's kind of like.
I'm just trying to get board level of board. No, I'm not trying to avoid any transparency.
That didn't mean that you were trying to intentionally avoid it, it was just not comfortable with having discussion. But, yeah, I think you can have a subcommittee.
You can have two people from the city commission go and meet with their board.
You, and then you meet with their board by their board meeting?
Probably.
On record.
I think that'd be the best way to do it. If you want two members from the city commission to go.
Just open their full board meeting.
Right, instead of two members of the board commissioners meeting or two members of the.
Well, I would, I mean, what is word, I would be tempted, I would want to do that, and I'd be, I'd be happy to, to guarantee that I wouldn't discuss anything that hasn't been discussed by this entire commission all day.
I don't think, you know, if you do it that way, and you send a representative of the city commission to the board, then you don't have that tier, you'd be decent more.
No, you can send a commissioner and the city manager.
Something like that, or, or, you know, Jeff, or, or, or whoever, you know, that's like, or Steve, or something, but, yeah, maybe that sounds a bit, a bit, we'd send a one board meeting.
You would probably wanna have.
We may, we may, we may say, we need to go.
I think that'd be a good clean, open, transparent communication. I really, I mean, however we communicate with them, I prefer that we do it on the record, you know, and publicly, and that seems like a pretty graceful, graceful solution. Without objections, I'd rather not figure out when that board meeting is and notify the rest of the commission.
Tomorrow I'm gonna invite Fred out to Pinnacle Court. You're aware of Pinnacle Court?
Yes.
Talk to the, one of the main property owners out there about what he's filling out the forms for, he's got some, I'm assuming over forty units per complex. And there's not physically enough room to store the cans to per resident, or recycling the garbage in the apartments, much less with not room on the curb to accommodate those many cans. And in our current ordinance, if it becomes a traffic hazard, we can waive service to this, these large apartment complexes.
I thought we did the service. Yeah, I thought we did the service department complex as a part of it.
We have an ordinance of eight or more, eight or less as of two thousand nine, if there's a grandfather or older units, okay? And we have probably three in town that are grandfather, but just from a standpoint of going forward, we have something in our current ordinance that we can force them to get dumpsters, because it becomes a traffic hazard if they set all those out on the curb. But I think we need to do that sooner than later, and let them know they don't need to get dumpsters.
I think there would be two potential solutions, one would be to require dumpsters, and I don't think it's that reasonable for large apartment complexes to have dumpsters. The other. Or.
Big cans. That we reduce the number of cans. But right now, we don't really have any provision for sharing, but I can't imagine how long it would take to, you know, each.
We're already looking at a place that has fashion sheets. I've did a phone email, maybe come over there since February, trying to get in touch with, yeah, in regard to that, since, since that time.
One property owner, and I'm talking, and it's been a problem, just because the number of units, and they don't have dumpsters, it was hard when they did have dumpsters, we were dumping them for the people that.
Is it a different problem as a dumpster in the back?
I, I would assume we're gonna use that current ordinance and say we can not longer, you know, we're gonna order them a lot of cans and a lot of expense, and then say we're not gonna serve, I'd rather say I'm not gonna serve you before we order the cans and force the issue early than later.
Right, and then even if that, if all apartment, apartment owners come in.
Say you're gonna be a traffic hazard, we're writing you a letter today, you're not gonna be eligible for this new art program, you're not gonna make that provision. And get that before we order the number of cans, that would save, that's more than more cans and save the traffic hazard level. You might get some calls, but there's not that many, and there are three or four places we can do, but I think it's basically the same.
I think there's only three parameters, in terms of getting all the parameters down on paper today, I think there's only three that haven't been, haven't been discussed. One of them is just a, a question that's on this, this basic throw sheet, that we've already, we've already answered, and we've been discussing it today, but just to clarify, will citizens who did not request a refund on the garbage fee be able to put that fee towards the next program? And we all agree that's a yes, right? I mean, I know, I know we said that, but the question was on the sheet, so I just wanted to make sure I got it separate and intended to answer. In terms of, uh, I think we're, you know, and we discussed this stuff recently already. Dustin, yeah, I was thinking, the one question that is, the people who did not, can be paying for a can, they should just go ahead and request.
I thought, I'm sorry, I'll answer your question, it's okay, I saw we looked at the database, and what do you, what do you, Jeff, it's those hard numbers, we could go ahead and cut people's checks and head and ask for the money back, and if they ask for thirty-five gallon can, who does automatically cut the check back?
That's what I was.
That's what I was planning on doing.
Sure, and if, and if they request a four dollar can, then they'll just get that.
Yeah, that's correct, it's worth a four dollar can.
We've discussed, uh, you know, fines and enforcement for illegal dumping, I think is also, and we've, we've discussed, we've also discussed, uh, less blatant noncompliance. So for example, we're gonna have some folks who are going out of their way, you know, Eric Burks is gonna come over and dump all this trash in our yards, right? I mean, that's, that's not an accident, that's not a misunderstanding, that's just illegal, and we're gonna have fines for that sort of thing. But I think it's also safe to say that some folks are just gonna inadvertently, you know, end up putting some trash in the recycling, or, uh, you know, setting things out the wrong way, et cetera. And, uh, you know, we've literally discussed cutting people a lot of slack for noncompliance and issuing warnings before getting any kind of actual penalties, you know, just, just as an education saying. Again, this is also already discussed, I'm trying to get it on, you know, get it on paper, it's not discussing parameters today. Am I, am I correct in recalling, we discussed this, cause I'm trying to help my memory at this point, but my recollection is that we discussed this in terms of, uh, setting fines for straight up illegal dumping, and enforcing that right off the bat. Cause that's just gonna be blatantly intentional law breaking, and then issuing, uh, what, two warnings? Three warnings, how many, how many warnings are we gonna issue before we get to not comply, so, so then I don't have to be supplied.
Well, if we're a little time, let's do structure out, I think, if we're based on, we do three ones, and, or those incidentals, not intentional warnings, illegal dumping, but incidentals, you know, you have three warnings and then, you know, be, respond at that point, it was the.
Is it one more warning right now, Jeff? Thought I put out my, one gallon, twelve inch can, so it should be forty gallons, I can see the little tag.
What we've talked about, I guess, is treating like grass. Grass, you get a written notice, and you have five, you have five days to correct the grass, mow your grass, and if you don't, within those five days, the city comes out and mows it for you, and you get a, a bill in the mail, and one thought. you get a, a bill in the mail, and one thought, we had, is staff would be to give a written notice that you put a bag out, and we don't collect it, you have five days to bring it back to your house. And on the sixth day, we notice it's still out there, then you would get a twenty-five dollar fine, and then we'd just go up to the, prompt it to pick it up before their next day.
So you're using a written notice on the first incident, and then give some time to correct?
Five days.
You know, which, and then if they get the notice and they don't correct it, then it becomes a willful error to correct.
And is that bill sent out at that time, or is it added on, and we end up, we end up by end of?
We would place a lien on the property. We would have so many days. We would cover that when we review the ordinance, proposed ordinance. The way it's written today, the proposed ordinance is treating it more like a high weeds, very common, when we have five days, they have five days to get an in compliance, and on the sixth day, if it's not, they went on the town or move out, we would just send a truck there and pick it up and send a twenty-five dollar fine. So they have ample opportunity to correct it before they get fined. But it also doesn't mean it's gonna be out there for two or three weeks generating complaints. So, that was our thoughts, and maybe how to address it quickly, and give five days to come in and get complaints.
I think that's pretty fair and reasonable.
Because currently the ordinance is three written, and then you got a code enforcement, and that takes-
Right, right.
It just doesn't, it's not a good, too long for garbage, because garbage can, you know, becomes a health hazard when it's not picked up, so.
Have, have five, have, have any particular fine levels been set? I assume it would be kind of pretty standard.
We just thought twenty-five dollars for noncompliant, and I've said hows.
What about the, what, illegal dumping? And I know that's already illegal, and we already have, have some folks, I don't, I'm not sure what the current penalties are, or if we need to clarify or amend anything, or if that's your final way to do it.
The issue there is if you've actually witnessed someone doing it before, you can be more of a court issue, would that be, how's it handled today, Ron?
Well, the way we have it right now is that, uh, if it's a, if it's more than just what Jeff's discussed, then it'd be a civil offense and a civil penalty of not less than fifty dollars, but not more than five hundred dollars. That's the way it's drafted right now.
I realize that some other could be held, could be held liable for illegal dumping if somebody witnesses it, and even if you throw a paper cut out of your car. My understanding is that other cities, uh, other cities prosecute folks who sell whole bags of trash that have multiple indemnifiers inside of those bags. So if I say, if I put a bag of trash in your yard, for example, and it has things in the trash, like my trash bill, and my, you know, my bank statements and this and that.
And the last warning.
And it has a lot, for the point is that it has my name and address in there repeatedly. It's very easy to tell this, my, my garbage. My understanding is that that's prosecutable. I mean, anybody can fight back on anything, I mean, anybody can, right, possess any charge, you know, there are arguments and fingerprints, but-
My understanding, based upon what Chief Wilkway said last week, was that if it's a felony offense, then you don't have to have an eyewitness, or the officer doesn't have to witness the violation, but if it's a misdemeanor, then the officer has to witness the violation. And the question I would have for him is, well, if the officer finds the address in there, you know, naming the, the person, is that sufficient? So I'll talk to him, see what he says about that.
Let us know if we need to actually amend the ordinance or even the level of violation in order to make all that pan out.
Right, and of course we've already, Jeff asked us draft it, we've already prepared.
Sure. The only other parameter question, and we probably can't answer this today, but one concern that has come up, that did not come up in any of, that's one of the, most of these concerns are the things that came up with the forum that we've been, we've been working on for a few months. What about folks who, what about folks who eat multiple cans? I understand right now, I think folks are probably interviewing, told that, that only one can is gonna be available. I have a couple of suggestions, take it or leave it. One, some folks would really, I mean, there are some folks who said a ninety-five gallon can, what, three, three small cans, right? And that's, and that, that, that's, that's obviously a silly attempt to game the system. But some folks have a legitimate concern in there, and it goes back to having a hard time handling different sized, different sized cars. I think that if we were to offer bags instead of cans, this would address some of that concern. But another alternative, I'm just putting this on the table for discussion, would be to, for example, and I know it costs more for us, it would cost us more to give somebody two small cans than to give them one medium can. They produce, I mean, they can hold the same amount of waste, but it costs us more to provide two cans. That's pretty, that's pretty cut and dry. One suggestion is, would be to offer two small cans for five dollars, or three small cans for fifteen dollars. So folks are only paying a little bit more than they would if they just had it consolidated into one can, and an extra one or two dollars covers, you know, helps offset the cost of providing, that's one thought. The other, and some of this gets a little complicated, but the rate structure we're charging, which is basically nine dollars per size increment, and that's what we're charging, we're just taking a hundred and fifty dollars out of the annual cost in terms of that credit, but that's still what this whole discussion was based on. So another possibility would be, let's say somebody had, needs a hundred and twenty gallons. Let's say somebody, you know, let's say you've got a family, they just put out a hundred and twenty gallons of trash, and, and they don't want to have to set out that many bags, they, they want to set it out in cans. Since every size increment is essentially nine dollars, minus a hundred and fifty annual cost, we could continue that logic with one can, such that if somebody, for example, somebody wanted to set out a ninety-five gallon can and a thirty-five gallon can, or two sixty-fives, then they, then, uh, then we could charge them nine dollars per size increment, so that, for example, somebody could pay twenty-one dollars a month, they really wanted to set out that much trash and put out a large can and another small can. Does that make, does that make any sense? I don't think many folks would actually want to exercise this option, but if somebody really wants to throw out a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty gallons of waste a month, we need to somehow or another give them that choice. I suppose we could do it just with the overflow bags, but-
Come on, that's the worst of them.
Sure. And, and, and I'm already gonna debate my own logic, but, um, we're offering, if you get three overflow bags per size increment, and overflow bag for three dollars apiece, then, then it actually doesn't matter, it's a block, and folks can set out the ninety-five gallon can plus the overflow cans, and even, and regardless of whether they're paying for cans or bags, the cost is gonna be the same to put out a hundred and fifty gallons worth of, worth of trash, whether they're paying for cans or bags. So I don't think we need to discuss the possibility of offering multiple cans, as long as the concept of offering bags instead of cans is, is well comfortable with.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, just, that's just clarification. Beyond that, then, uh, is it an answer, no?
I think it's still awkward to part at the same, at the same rate.
Well, I think, if I, may I?
Please.
You, you can only do it with the ninety-five, because if you do sixty-five and say I want two sixty-fives, they're gonna take that, and one ninety-five. So I, I've heard of communities, and I can't tell you which one today, that only offers a second can if you get the ninety-five, and you need more, then you can pay extra and get that second large can, but they don't do it for thirty-five, sixty-five, or ninety-five, it's only-
If you give a ninety-five.
I think that's actually really fair, because then, I mean, then somebody's paying, I think that's actually really fair. And folks are still, in a roundabout way, that's still very cost-effective for people, because that's the equivalent of getting that hundred and fifty dollar annual credit twice. You see what I'm, because, you know, that, we're taking a hundred and fifty out of the nine, I mean, I know that that hundred and fifty dollar credit versus the nine dollar size increment gets complicated, but I think, yeah, I mean, I think that's perfectly fair, because, yeah, we are requiring the larger can if they want another can, but it's within the context of that, uh, credit or discount. I think, is it, I think that's a great solution, what Tom suggested. Would there be any objection to, to going ahead with folks calling and making them aware of that possibility?
If I may clarify, you were saying that the first can would be the twelve dollar, and the second one would be?
The second one would be a large can for twelve dollars.
So they would pay twenty-four?
They'd pay twenty-four dollars for two large can.
And that's the only option that would go on?
Sure. And the alternative would be overflow bags?
And all, and I understand all the overflow bags would be eighteen gallon?
Is, is that the kitchen side of the town? That's where, I mean, we're talking in the context of ten or twelve gallon, but yeah, I mean, eight, I think, eighting's close enough, from my perspective.
Because the bags that, that we got from the Swanna, those are bigger.
Sure.
So I'll have to contact and make sure I make, make as far as.
I mean, I, I think, and the point, we discussed this earlier, but the point is that if the overflow bags are three dollars for thirty gallon bag, then there's no reason, you know, then that, that can be used to game the system pretty easily, so the cost needs to be equivalent to the, to the cost of the can. So it, it sounds like all of these parameters have now been clarified, with the exception of, of, with the exception of billing and a couple of things.
And hardship.
And, right, and the hardship. But we have, we can agree we want to address hardship in this ability, it's just a question of exactly which, which route we pay. Is that fair to, is that fair to communicate to the public? I think everybody agrees we want to make accommodations. We just haven't agreed on, on what yet. Is that fair?
I think the question came up when the swister was out. Is, you know, many fees that the city has in which we waive the fee called hardship, or, or reduce the fee?
I don't think we did for Sutter.
We got a big one, so, basically. Enable the charge, we've been just on a bill for inability to pay basically on income? If it's not covered by health insurance and they don't happen to have low income?
Right, but isn't that hardship?
That's not determined by us, though.
It's not determined by the insurance company in Medicare.
And the billing company, and if it goes to collection, we play-